Great. Good evening, everybody. I will call this special meeting of the Albany City Council to order. City Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan is not here. Councilmember Lopez is not here. Vice Mayor McKee?
Here.
And Mayor Tiedemann?
Here. And I'll say that Councilmember Jordan should be joining us shortly. He's running a little late. And Councilmember Lopez unfortunately can't join us this evening. That will bring us to our study session for the evening, which is on our biannual operating budget for fiscal years 2023, '24, and '24, '25. And I'll kick it over to Heather.
Okay. So, yes, this is the fiscal year 2023, '24, and 2024, '25 biennial budget. We are currently in fiscal year 22, '23. Our fiscal years run from July 1st to June 30th each year. And I am going to share my screen. I think. Okay. Yeah, I know how that works. So, we will start a slideshow. So, we are going to... Yeah, so we just talked about that. I'm going to go through the table of contents and add value to certain parts of this. This is a massive document. It provides a lot of information. So if people are interested in pretty much any city budget information or financial information in general, this is a good place to start along with the audit. I hope that this is a little bit more user-friendly than the audit, but we'll see. So, section one of the biennial budget booklet has, is the introduction. It includes the staff report, the budget resolution, any fiscal policies that the city has. It'll include the appropriations or GAN limit and the master fee schedule. We currently have three fiscal policies that council has authorized in the biennial budget package. We are asking for amendments to two of them. The general fund reserve policy, we are not suggesting any changes. Staff did an analysis behind the scenes using the Government Finance Officers Association template for the, for general fund reserve amount setting. And while some categories went up and some went down, as described in the booklet itself, the general score stayed the same, the overall score. And so, the 25% is still, you know, pegged at where we, staff thinks that we should be. So, we're not requesting any changes to the general fund reserve policy. The reserve fund policy, we have made some edits. We have included definitions and a little bit more detail about how we plan on using these funds. And then, the investment policy is being requested to be updated. Most of the changes were requested by the, were suggested by the new investment manager. And most are just bringing our policy in line with state law. The master fee schedule is also included. There are a handful of adjustments to the master fee schedule. We updated a number of numbers with the CPI adjustments. The, there's often the comment that our fees are just random amounts. And they've always been pegged to CPI, but that means that some of them are like 17 cents and, you know, whatever. So, we've also rounded them to make them even numbers. And then, we have removed the previous time the master fee schedule went to council. Some council members mentioned that there, it was a large document and there were fees that we just don't charge anymore. The taxi cab license and then the bingo license fee. Just nobody really does that anymore. Although bingo is fun, I'm not knocking it. So, we have removed those. Section two of the booklet is, talks about staffing. We have an overall organizational chart. And that's just, you know, how the city is set up in general with the different departments. We have the staffing schedule that lists a number of years of prior authorized staffing levels and then the requested staffing levels for '24 and '25. This is the number of max authorized positions. It does not include anything about filled positions. It also includes the bargaining unit changes for these two fiscal years. All three of our bargaining units are up for negotiation in this biennial budget. So, I have included in here what we know. And then, we'll have to come back when we, after negotiations for the rest of it. And then, we also have the proposed salary schedule. I am going to talk about, there are several changes to the, well, not several, but a handful of changes to the salary schedule that are requested. But I'll talk about them later in this presentation. So, section three is really the meat of the document, the biennial operating budget. You're, it's set up similar to how your quarterly updates are set up. So, you have your audit overview. You have your department summary. And then, you have the detail by department. I'm not right now going to go into, you know, nitty-gritty numbers, but I am going to do, call out a few things for you guys. So, revenues. Revenues are proposed to be increased by $4.4 million. 1.0 of those is property tax, 895 is sales and use taxes, 417,000 or 100,000 franchise and other taxes. And then, we're also increasing transfers in fairly significantly through the pension override tax to fund those pension obligations. Most of this is a true-up of revenue lines that we were very conservative in budgeting through the pandemic because we just had no idea what was going to happen. And it has shown that the city is actually really resilient. Where other places saw declines in sales tax revenue or things like that, Albany saw increases or did not, didn't decrease as much. We did see increases, they just weren't as significant as they were originally. So, this brings us more in line to where revenues have been coming in. And then, we also see a pretty significant increase in charges for services from recreation because they're starting to offer programs again. So, that's on the revenue side. On the expense side, we have increases to salary and benefits. We're proposing to add an IT analyst, a part-time community engagement specialist. We also recently had a compensation study done by Ralph Anderson and Associates. And it showed that there were certain staff salaries that are significantly undermarket. The unrepresented and SEIU positions are maintenance and clerical union are the hardest hit. And if you look at the 50th percentile, some of them are significantly undermarket. So, we're suggesting that over the next three years, we bring staff salaries up to that 50th percentile mark. It costs approximately $310,000 a year to implement that strategy. And then, also CalPERS costs are increasing. In addition to the UAL, so technically, the unfunded liability payment that is going to be required in fiscal year '24 is like $7,000 less than the one that we had to pay this year. However, that is a very cheery number based on an 18% gain on investment that CalPERS had in fiscal year '21. In fiscal year '22, they had a negative 6% return. So, in fiscal year '25, once the actuarial valuations come in based on the returns from fiscal year '22, they're, they're behind. We're expecting the UAL to swing in the other direction. So, we are not suggesting that in the budget, we actually lower it to what we anticipate. We're suggesting that we budget for a $3 million payment even though we are only going to have about $2.9 million payment. And we're suggesting that we put that amount into the pension reserve, that extra 100,000 approximately. And that way, our budget doesn't, you know, have the peaks and valleys. And we're starting to plan for the increases that are continuing moving forward. We also put in a half a percent additional PERS. So, for active employee salaries, you, the city pays a, an amount for PERS. That amount is determined by CalPERS. Since we have a fairly significant unfunded liability payment, that number is clearly not historically enough. So, we are suggesting that we, we charge ourselves an additional half a percent and put that amount in the new pension reserve fund as well. It's approximately $40,000, it's not a large amount, but it does start to do something. And then, our other expenses are going up. Our insurance costs have increased. They've increased across the board, across the United States. So, that's not, that's not unusual. We're hoping that the large increases in insurance costs slow down in the next, in the next year or so. But right now, insurance costs are rising pretty steeply. And our IT software expenses, the city is, our phone system is at the end of its useful life. And so, we're updating that. And there are several other items that are in need of upgrading. And as everyone knows, municipalities are a target for cyber attacks. And so, we are trying to make sure that Albany is protected. Calling out some specific items that people are often interested in. We have moved event sponsorships to the council budget. The amount in the budget is $65,000 currently. And it was, that number was arrived at based on current year allocations. So, there's funds for the Slano Avenue Association, for Albany Film Fest, and the Albany Juneteenth. Sugar, sweet, and beverage tax allocations are also often something that people look for. And those were moved to the non-departmental budget under professional services. So, all of the items that were allocated for fiscal year '24 are in that line. So, moving on in the budget, section four is special revenue and enterprise funds. For the study session, I did not put together the, the actual number detail for these, for these amounts because we don't have, we didn't at the time. I have since gotten the actual tax rates. But, or the max tax rates that can be assessed. And we'll bring those when the budget comes back in June. But, this section has a summary of each tax. What it is, what it's for, when it was passed, if it's been updated. All of that information is available in section four of the budget. When you do have the numbers, it includes a fund balance as well as, you know, what we plan on using for operating, as well as the planned capital improvement plan expenditures for that fund and an estimated ending balance. We are going to be coming back in the fall for a capital improvement budget. So, those numbers will be, you know, estimates based on the previous capital improvement plan. And there are several special revenue funds, as you can see. So, section five is our debt service funds. In the last biennial budget, there were two. We have since paid off our storm drain or sewer note. And so, now we only have the general obligation refunding bond outstanding. Section six is the Albany Police and Fire Pension Fund. This is our closed police and fire pension fund. Per the charter, some of this information needs to come to council every so often. And so, the information is included in your budget booklet. Section seven is new. This details out the different reserve funds. And included in this section is a request for appropriation for, just a blanket appropriation for several of the funds, not all of them. In, over the last biennial budget, we've noticed that if something breaks and we need to replace a piece of equipment that wasn't in the operating budget, and it was like $1,000, we had to come to council to get the appropriation. And then, it just, something that we wouldn't, a purchase that we wouldn't normally have to come to council for would add several weeks to the ability to actually obtain that item. So, these purchases would still go through the normal purchasing policies. If it would come to council before, it would still come to council. It just gives us some ease of administration in purchasing items from the reserve funds. And then, our, oh, one thing I should say. In this section, we do have an updated, each, each reserve fund has an updated listing of what we anticipate needing to purchase over the next five years. You will note that the anticipated expenditures exceed the amounts in the funds. So, it's something to think about. We do not currently actively contribute to these funds. We do it as we can, generally with any budget surplus from prior years when we bring the audit forward. So, this is something that we're going to want to think about moving forward, is actually funding these funds through the operating budget. So, the idea is that the operating budget would be fairly consistent, whereas the reserve funds would have those peaks and valleys when we needed to make those larger purchases. So, section eight is future funding needs. This was in the last one, the last biennial budget. However, section 8.2 is new. So, 8.1 is, talks about pensions, mostly the CalPERS pension unfunded liability. Just an overview of, you know, what we're looking at over the next few years. It also includes the Financial Advisory Committee's memos on the pension liabilities. And then, section 8.2 is new. It is a 10-year projection of our anticipated cash flow. So, the budget is, is the ideal. The budget is if we had every staff position filled and, you know, we had every project done and all of that. But, this projection, this 10-year projection does, looks at historical vacancies and all of that to see where do we think we are actually going to land from a cash perspective? And so, you'll see that while in fiscal year '24, we are proposing a budget that has a $1.2 million deficit, the projections shows that we'll end up with about a $300,000 surplus. So, you'll see that in future years, revenues do not keep up with expenses. So, we do recognize a deficit down the road, but not for fiscal year '24. And that is, that's my presentation. So, I think we're going to invite FAC, the members of the Financial Advisory Committee, to talk. So, I will introduce Kim.
Hi, I'm Kim Traynor. Thanks for having us here today. Judy Kerr, Kyle Bowman also here to talk. So, what I thought I would do is provide kind of a summary of the Financial Advisory Committee's thoughts on this budget. We had the opportunity to look at a prior version of this budget, which has since been updated. And Heather and I had a little bit of a chance to talk about it. So, some of my comments are maybe a little bit more oriented towards the numbers we first saw, which were projecting a larger deficit than what this budget is projecting. First comment is, I know that as part of this process, the council will be approving the various reserve fund policies. And the general reserve fund is one of those things. The general reserve fund balance, as, after the June 30, '22 close of the year, there was a surplus that year. And then, I believe the council approved some appropriations. And after those appropriations, the general fund reserve balance is currently at about 9.25 million as of the June 30, '22 year. So, there will be another difference after what's projected to be a surplus for this fiscal '23 year. But, that's the most current information we have, 9.25 million. The general reserve fund policy states that the city is supposed to reserve 25% or three months' operating expenses of the approved operating budget. So, with the approved operating budget, well, the proposed operating budget that we have for the proposed '24 budget, that's about a $30.5 million expense on that budget. So, 25% of that would be 7.6 million. And that means we're in good shape to start the year with our 9.25 million that we have. There is a budget deficit that's projected here of about 1.3 million. And as Heather was just alluding to, there's, there's some play, right, in these numbers because the city finance department is required to calculate what would be the full burdened cost of salaries. And salaries represent about 70% of the city's budget. So, if we filled every position on July 1st, then we'd have a deficit of 1.3 million. Historically, that's not been the case. I don't know exactly what the historical staffing has been, but I think it's been in the 85% to 90% filled position rate. So, what, one of the things that the Financial Advisory Committee had requested, and I think that maybe is what led to the forecasting piece that's right at the very end of this packet, is what, what does fiscal '24 and fiscal '25, what did those years really realistically look like from a staffing perspective? And all indications are that we're doing a better job of starting to fill some of the vacancies within the various departments. And so, in the past, we've been able to budget for those positions, but then, we didn't really have to pay for them because we didn't, we weren't able to fill all those positions. It's looking like probably there'll be more filled for the, the next two years going forward than they have in the past, although it's hard to say what exactly. So, I think it, it will be helpful to look at those projections at the end and maybe take that into consideration when you're looking at this budget because probably we're not going to have 100% staffing on July 1st and maintain it for the whole period. But, in terms of the ability to hire people and pay them, there has to be those appropriations made. So, that's causing this deficit budget. It does, it causes, it makes it hard to kind of get a reality or a reasonableness on this budget. Where are we really going to be? And I think in the last several years, we've had these budgeted deficits where we've said, well, we know we're not fully staffed. We're probably going to come out okay. But I think the trend is, is going to be less in that direction. And we're going to be less able to bank on the fact that, well, we won't end up realizing these big deficits because we're not going to be fully staffed. So, having said that, if we, if we recognized this $1.3 million deficit that is in the proposed budget, that would take the general fund reserve balance down to just under $8 million as of June 30, '24. And so, we're still okay, but we're having to basically cover some of that deficit with our general reserve, general fund reserve. The, with a 30 million, $30.5 million expense budget, the targeted general fund reserve would be 7.6 million. And we'd be just under 8 million at June 30, '24. Looking at the next year, the proposed '25 budget, so that, that has a $2.2 million, $2.3 million projected deficit. So, if we really did realize that deficit in the first year of this biennial budget package, and then, we recognize the second year according to the budget as well, then that would take our general fund reserve balance down to about 5.7 million as of June 30, '25. And we would be out of compliance with our reserve policy. The reserve, the budgeted expenses as proposed would be just over 32 million. So, 25% of that would be $8 million. And this would take us down to about 5.7 million if everything that was in this budget was actually realized. So, we know that it probably won't be realized to the extent of these deficits that are proposed here. But, what we wanted to point out as a committee is that it is a trend that the city can't really afford to keep doing. One of the other things that we've noticed with the expense budgets are the, while there are big projected increases in the revenue, so just some quick math, the, the '24 proposed revenue budget is 29.3 million. And that's an 18% increase over the '23 budget. revenue budget is 29.3 million, and that's an 18% increase over the '23 budget. As Heather mentioned, the, the '23 budget was, was proposed at a lower amount because there was uncertainty still with being in the pandemic and, and what was going to happen with that. So that number has been bumped up quite a bit, and it's actually 8%, an 8% increase over the projected '23 actual numbers. So that does represent a healthy increase in our revenues. But the problem is, the expense side is 18%, and it's an 18% increase over the '23 actual numbers. It's a 12% increase over the '23 budgeted numbers. So what's happening is the expenses are increasing at a faster pace than the revenue is increasing. And then when you look at the '25 budget, the revenue is proposed to increase at about a 2% rate over the '24 revenue budget, but the expenses are proposed to increase at about a 5% rate. So the trend isn't, it's not sustainable to the city. We, we shouldn't continue to budget a deficit, frankly, because we're likely to begin to start realizing those deficits. And while we're in a good position right now from a general fund reserve policy standpoint, we can quickly erase that. With the budget as proposed, within two years, we will be on a path where we would have to remedy that. And one of the remedies of that is you have to cut operating expenses so that you can come back within having a 25% of operating expenses cash in the reserve account. So I think our, our general take on this is that better to start trying to make some adjustments now than to put forth this budget as proposed and probably get into some difficulty with the, with the general fund reserve balance. And then that would require steeper adjustments in the next biennial budget. We also, in the committee, there was some concern among our group about, about large increases to the property tax and transfer tax budgets, given the uncertain economic climate. So we're, we're basing, I believe these budgeted numbers are based on estimates from the assessed property tax values that were given to us by the county, and then proposing increases based on, on those. We think that the approach to solving the budget difficulties that the city has is probably going to have to be a two-pronged approach. We definitely have to look for new revenue sources, but I don't think we can revenue our way out of these budget challenges. And I think that there are going to have to be some reconsideration of budgeted expenses because the, the expenses are increasing at a rate that is not commensurate with the rate at which the revenues are increasing, and it's not sustainable. The other factor with this that we haven't spoken about yet, and that I'd like to talk about, is the unfunded accrued pension liability. Is that, can I segue into that at this point? So these budgets do include the UAL payments, so the unfunded accrued liability payments for the pension, which is, those are the makeup payments that CalPERS is requiring all of the municipalities to make to cure the, the underfunded position that we're in. So there's the regular pension payments that we make for current active employees, and then there's the UAL payments that we have to make. And those payments are, are going up fast. They're projected to go up by 500,000 in fiscal '25, and then by about 260,000 each in, in '26 and '27, and then another 211,028. So it's, they're continuing to increase. So they go, those payments go from about 2.9, which is where we currently are, to about $5.4 million in the fiscal '20, '31, '32 year. So that's a, that's a $2.5 million difference from where we are right now. And our position is that if we're, if we're budgeting a deficit right now without even factoring in the fact that these pension payments, which are required, are going to be starkly increasing, we need to factor it in. The pension, the, the Financial Advisory Committee does have a pension subcommittee. I sit on that, and Mark Privin from our group. And we're really fortunate to have Mark Privin on that committee because he's an actuary. So he really actually understands these reports in a way that the rest of us really don't, and has been able to give some really good analysis and commentary. And the points that I'm going to read here are, are mostly Mark's thoughts about the pension. So we did have a, the Financial Advisory Committee had a presentation by GovInvest, which is a software provider to the city currently that helps to run forecasts and do evaluations of the city's pension position. They're also available to potentially help the city develop a pension funding policy, and that was something that was discussed in quite a bit of detail, really at the last Financial Advisory Committee meeting, which was held on May 3rd. The idea with a pension funding policy is it would examine the various components of our various pension plans. We have eight or nine? Eight. So there's a closed pension plan that was closed in, I think, 1971. Then we have the CalPERS plans, and there are a number of those, fire and police, some of which are also now closed to new employees. And then PEPRA is the follow-on for the pension plans that are for people that are hired in current times. So there are these eight different plans, and they all have different, slightly different situations in terms of how funded they are versus not funded. I think the average comes out to about 70% funded, which is also kind of in, it's in line with a lot of municipalities in the state of California. And what, what we have talked about for the pension plan is, let's, we should think about the goals for our pension plans with, first and foremost, to meet all of the city's pension obligations, right? No default on pension plans. That's not been discussed, but that obviously is, is the first goal, is to meet all of the pension obligations and ensure affordability to the city and try to reduce the volatility in the amount of the payments required. Because right now, we're projecting that the payments, the extra payments that are required are going to increase by $2.5 million over what they are each year by nine or 10 years from now. The, the other problem with the pension funding picture is that there are a lot of variables in pension funding. So there's the discount rate, which has recently been lowered by CalPERS from 7% to 6.8%, I believe. And whenever CalPERS lowers the discount rate, what that means is the unfunded, or the pension liability goes up because the discount rate is the assumed investment return. So if your assumed investment return is now lower than it was before, and you still have the same assets, and you still have the same benefit obligations, that means your funded status is lower. So that was lowered a little bit recently. There was, back in 2016, the amortization period for the unfunded liability was decreased from 30 years to 20 years. So if you can imagine, all of a sudden, your, your mortgage lender saying, well, you had a 30-year loan, but we're going to reduce that to a 20-year term, that really causes the, the payments to go up. And so that's another thing that we dealt with. And then there's investment returns, right? So 20, the fiscal year that ended June 30, '21 was a great year. CalPERS had pretty good returns, I think somewhere in the 18% range. And then the fiscal year that ended June 30, '22, CalPERS's returns were negative seven, I think. So all of these things cause volatility in the funding that's required, and it, and it affects our funded status of the plan. We think that probably the, the goal for the city should be to obviously increase the funded percentage of the plan to somewhere in the 80% to 100% range. And CalPERS is pushing all municipalities towards 100% funding. And that's what those UAL payments are designed to achieve. Another thing with the pension funding policy is, if we had a pension funding policy, for example, it could have consequences for amounts the city would be required to fund if the funded ratio were to drop below a certain amount. So we don't currently have a pension funding policy, but it would be good to look at doing something like that because it would serve as a roadmap for what staff have to do going forward. And, and right now, we're really, we're making our UAL payments, we're making our current payments, and then there are, you know, there's the recently introduced idea of the pension reserve. We'll put $40,000 in. I know there have been times when there's been a surplus, and there was a, an allocation made to make an additional payment. But we're really, we're just doing what we can, and it's not based on a policy that is examining things like actual plan performance and plan funded percentages and things like that. So we'd like to look into creating a pension funding policy that would look at things like that, funded percentage, pension fund liquidity, those type of things. There are some other things that we will be examining as a, as the pension subcommittee. For example, benchmarks. So what is the unfunded liability in the city's pension plans in relation to the city's population or in relation to the budget? These are other considerations that could be used so that you have these benchmarks, and you can compare Albany to other similarly sized cities in the state of California or other cities in our area, that sort of thing. So we're planning to undertake a research project to start to do some benchmarking, and these are other things that could be considered when developing a pension funding policy to help us adjust to changing things, changes in the demographics, changes in the investment return. If the discount rate is changed again by CalPERS, and so that we could, that would help us to react and trigger action based on certain of those things happening. Also, part of the funding policy would be considering, does the city want to hold on to extra pension contributions in our own pension reserve fund, which gives us flexibility, right? Because we could appropriate those funds to the pension reserve, the council could also unappropriate those funds if, if needed. You'd have the flexibility to use them for something else if, if it came to that. Or does the policy say, no, you know, we're better off because we're being charged an assessment, basically. It used to be 7%. I imagine it'll go to 6.8% with the lowering of the discount rate. But basically, we're charged an assessment on our unfunded accrued liability in the pension plan. So the thinking has been up to this point, well, can we make 7% somewhere else managing that money ourselves? Probably, we're, we're better off putting it into the CalPERS plans and reducing our UAL. But then, you know, the next year, they come back and they say, well, now the discount rate's not 7%, it's 6.8%. So even though you just put in an extra however many, you know, million dollars or whatever it was, your liability is going up anyway. So there's, there's just a lot of moving pieces with this, and we want to point out that it's really going to become a bigger and bigger part of our city budget that we need to plan for. And in, you know, in light of the fact that there is this large looming ever-increasing payment that needs to be made, we really think the city needs to take a close look at, at the current operating expense budget and perhaps try to leave itself a little bit more leeway towards meeting these additional payments that we know are going to be coming. Those are all my comments, and I know that both of you have a couple add-on things.
Yes, please, I, I want to hear you guys out, but I also know we have a regular meeting that we will have to get to, and we have to take public comment and have time for the council discussion, so.
All right. So Kyle Bowman, also on the Financial Advisory Committee. So just wanted to add on as regards to the budget. So Kim spoke about the challenges of budgeting, given the staffing dynamics. We don't know if the position is going to be filled. One thing that I thought could actually be helpful is having some sort of forecast of looking at if we actually do end up with our typical vacancies, what does that actually look like from an expense perspective, and what does that actually do to the end of the year and the impact on the deficit or surplus and its eventual impact on the general fund. So I thought that could be helpful. And then the one other thing that I'd add is, we found it pretty helpful to compare the 2024 budget and the 2025 budget versus the 2023 projected actuals, because we're almost to the end of the 2023 fiscal year, rather than what's in there, or in addition to what's in there, which is a comparison versus the 2023 budget. There were two line items that really jumped out. There were both a $1 million increase in the community development line item expenses and the public works line item expenses. So $1 million increased over the 2023 actuals in the 2024 budget. So it might be helpful to dig into what's actually driving that because that's a 66% increase over actuals in one, and then an 18% increase over actuals in the other. So found that would be a potentially helpful comparison. And that's all.
Good evening, and really quickly, I'm Judy Kerr. I'm on the revenue subcommittee, and, and while we don't have a full report happily to, to present to you tonight, I just want to let you know that we are exploring and have previous, reported to a previous council some of the ideas on the revenue enhancement sub, from the revenue enhancement subcommittee. There's always going to be resistance to new revenue if it involves taxes, so we've been sensitive to that in, in our thinking. And we do have some relatively creative thoughts that we would simply look to you for guidance as to which you'd like us to pursue, because we do anticipate that there is going to be a need for increased revenue, in spite of what Heather has shared with us, which is that revenue has been very stable and resilient, I think was the word that you used in Albany. And that's, that's encouraging, but I think we always need to think about new sources of revenue. So we're, we're here to help you with that.
Thank you. Brings it to council for any questions.
Thank you, and thank you very much for all your service and your work. We obviously need it. So I hope you will keep at it, and very much appreciate your being here. Yeah, I did pick up on the, the increase in community development and public works as well. I looked just at the salary and wages, and it was an increase of 45% in each department. There's a number of other departments that have increases of 25%, 20%, 30%. When I thought about it in terms of the negotiated, nonrepresented COLA, which is, you know, 3% to 3.5%, STEPS are 5%. And, you know, and then looked at the adjustments. I compared the salary schedule from the proposed salary schedule of the one previous year, and it wasn't obvious to me with those three factors how we get a 45% salary and wages increase. Now, I don't have information on promotions, so that could be it, but that would be a lot of promotions, I would think. So I, I'm not expecting you necessarily to go into this here, but it would be useful to get more, more information on the increases in those departments and what the source is. And it's, I think every- And it's, I think every department but police, fire, and then ourselves was over 15%. Most of them were, I think there was one that was 17%, which was finance. And then the others were over 20%, and some were over 40%. So I personally, as a council member, I would just need more explanation for why such large We have a short amount of time, so I don't want to monopolize it. Do you want me to? I'll triage my remarks, so.
Go for it.
Okay, okay. Let's see. In terms of investment policy, there's no percentage limit in the portfolio for repurchase agreements in local government investment pools. I think it probably would make sense to have some limit there. I don't know, maybe you could do some research around that. Maybe you are doing some research around that. I know I said this before, and I don't expect an answer now. I'm not really familiar with repurchase agreements, so that also makes me nervous, but. Yeah, let's see, time deposits, which are CDs essentially, have a collateralization requirement, but negotiable CDs, which are, you know, liquid assets, or at least there's a market for them, do not have collateralization. So I don't know much about this area, but I'm curious why the difference, just comparing those two. There's a requirement to wait three months from when the council authorizes a purchase of a security that matures in more than five years to when it's actually purchased. I'm just curious why, why wait? It seems like if we're in that situation, we probably want to jump on something. I don't know. You know, market conditions can change dramatically in three months, so there's probably some sound reason for that, and more just from my education. The half percent PERS sort of voluntary increase, I guess you'll put it, self-imposed increase at about $40,000, that looks like it comes from about half the total salary and wages. Is that applied only to those employees who are in the most underfunded plan, or is it on all employees, all the salary and wages?
One more time.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. What I get from the adding up all the salary and wages, if you apply a half percent to that, it comes out to like $73,000, and you mentioned $40,000. And so I was curious, is the difference because that half percent is only being applied to those, the salaries and wages of those employees who are in those pension pools that are underfunded?
So there's a lot that goes into that. Mostly, PERS obligations do not apply to overtime or part-time salaries. So you'd have to take those out.
Okay. So I'm gathering it probably is applying mostly to everybody's base salary, plus or minus.
Base salary and special pays.
Okay.
It's complicated.
Thanks. Let's see, washing the clock here. There's an expenses graph, which I know we emailed about, and none of the numbers seem to match the audit overview in terms of categorization.
So I looked at that, and I think I must have miscategorized something, because I was like, wait, that's my budget, and it was applied to a different department? So I will redo that before it comes back to you guys. It looks like the total is accurate because the individuals are accurate, but not for the departments listed, so.
Okay, okay.
I will fix that.
Okay, yeah, and I would just, I mean, I don't know everything that goes on behind, of course, but the audit had the same breakdown, the same category, so I would think the numbers on the charge matched the numbers on that breakdown. Maybe there's a reason they don't, I don't know, but for transparency and understandability for people like me, at least, and maybe some members of the public who are deep into it. Page 88, which is, I think, beginning of expenses, says that there are, salaries and benefits are supposed to increase by 2.28 million, which is stated as 14%. Section 3.2, the general fund budget, department summary shows an increase of 2.40 million. So I know we interacted on why the discrepancy, but I think having a discrepancy in there, because not everybody's going to have access to you in the future necessarily, and so, you know, two years from now, who knows who's going to be here? I think it'd be better if those numbers matched and where there was an explanation for why they don't match. I would like to propose to the council that funding be included in the budget for paying for two CERT trainings per year. So currently, that is not budgeted. I think that is mission critical to the safety of the city. I think we get a lot of value out of it because we're training volunteers, so it's a huge leveraging opportunity.
I'm waiting for the question for staff.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm waiting for the question for staff.
You're waiting for the question?
And questions, then we'll go to public comment.
Oh, okay, okay.
Wasn't sure if there was a question hiding in there.
I rely on you to facilitate me, so you tell me when to shut up when I'm just going down the list, so.
I appreciate you going fast. We'll be able to go past seven on this.
Okay.
We need to.
Okay.
The goal is to start as close to seven as possible, but if we need to discuss farther, we will.
All right, very good. Then probably the last thing I have is, given rounding on the Masterpiece Schedule, which I fully appreciate, I mean, there's some values on there that are like $5, and so if it's, if CPI is, you know, 4% a year, and you round, it's never going to go up? So is a more precise number tracked behind the scenes so that it can bump up in the future? Okay, great, thanks.
Heather, there was a ton of questions in there. I don't know if you want to respond to any of them or take some of them as things to clarify in the next time we see this.
Luckily, they're all in email as well, so I will be able to respond to at least most of them by next time this comes to you.
Fantastic. Any other questions from council? If not, we will go to public comment.
We have none.
Amazing. I'm assuming no public comment in the room. Great, then we'll bring it back for council discussion. Does anyone want to start us off?
Okay. First of all, I know I jumped into questions. I tend to be kind of intense. Thank you so much for the work. It's an amazing amount of work, and I can say I was able to mentally process more of it this time than two years ago. So I'm not quite 100%, not in terms of understanding, but even like processing it all in my mind, but I'm getting closer, so thank you for all the work. And I will propose again that funding be included in the budget for paying for two CERT trainings per year. I believe CERT, which is an Albany 501(c)(3), paid for or actually had volunteer instructors for the last one, which is the first one post-pandemic in October. I don't think that's sustainable on them. I don't think they think it's sustainable. I think that the city gets a lot of leverage benefit out of that training because we have so many volunteers who put their time and energy into it. So I think for every dollar we put into it, we get a lot out. And like I say, I think it's probably no surprise as a geologist, I think it's mission critical to have as many people trained as possible.
How much was that training?
So I guess the direction would be to ask staff to come back with some sort of estimate. I don't have a firm estimate. I think it's on the order of thousands to 10,000 per session.
I'm wondering if there would be any grant type of consideration that we could look into that would cover that instead of, you know, taking it out of.
Yeah, maybe it would be direction to staff to look into how to fund such a thing. I mean, I know that Albany CERT hasn't come forward and said, oh, yeah, there's lots of grant opportunities for this.
So I want to thank Heather for all the work that she has been doing with staff on putting this report together. I tried to touch, I say touch every page before I had my meeting with Nicole and Heather, before this meeting. I say that primarily because I don't know that I necessarily absorbed everything on all 219 pages. And I really do want to thank the Financial Advisory Committee. So I do every once in a while listen into your meetings, because I think you have been doing a great job asking the questions that need to be asked and make sure that we, as a council, are getting the information we need to make these decisions. I think the main concern I have with the budget right now, recognizing that we haven't realized deficits in the past, is this 10-year projection that looks out is really telling us, at some point, those deficits are going to get realized. And I appreciate that our staff is working to make sure that our, the current staff we have is compensated and that our hiring practices are competitive with other communities. Professionally, in the firm that I work for, part of what I manage is hiring. Hiring is really hard right now, and wages are definitely a major impact on that. On the other side of that, I would ask if we recognize that we're at an 85, 80, you know, 90% vacancy in terms of staff. If we're looking 10 years out and we are at a budget deficit of, you know, I don't know, $2 million, whatever it is, at some point, we have to make a decision about how we're going to resolve those deficits. And taxes are one way. The other way would ask is, what's the minimum staff we need to accomplish what is core services that this city needs to provide? And I'm not saying that because I want us to not necessarily hire, but I want to understand if we had the minimum staff to provide core services, what does our 10-year projection look like? Is it that the Calpers, simply the unfunded pension and the pension payments, is that's what's driving our 10-year, you know, deficit? Is that really what's driving it, or is it us staffing? Because I, I guess if I dug into the numbers a little more, I might be able to figure that out, but I'm not understanding that. And so this idea of having a table that tells us simply, what's our rate increase of revenue that we expect, expenditures, and having expenditures broken down between salary and benefits, Calpers payments, and just essentially the pension payments, to understand which is increasing, projected increasing, and I fully get that these projections are crystal ball kind of things, right? Like, any one of these could change dramatically, but I want to have a better sense of that before the budget comes back to me to be able to understand. We need to start having conversations with the public about if it's really the pensions that are going to drive us over the edge, where we're not going to even be able to keep up with our own policies about holding 25% of our operating budget, then that's a discussion we should start preparing the public for, because we don't want to be in a situation where some of our neighbors have gone, where they've had to make dramatic cuts in services to address issues. So I guess that's where I am right now. I appreciate all the information. I'm just still trying to understand what's causing this 10-year problem that we're going to have, so.
Before I make my comments, some of which will sound pretty similar to the vice mayor's, I want to just go to Heather, because I know with what the vice mayor just said, you know, we have, you put together this 10-year projection that is trying to break all this down and show us what, based on our best info of what's actually going to happen, what's going to happen, and it looks to me like that unfunded pension liability is driving up the majority of that, seeing as we're saying that it's going to increase by 2.5 million somewhere down the road, and somewhere down the road, we have a 2.5 million deficit. Is, you may not have all the answers now, understandable, but I wonder if you have any response to the vice mayor's thoughts there?
Yeah, so if you look at the very last page of, I can share it in that way, I don't want to make everyone seasick, but, so if you look at the very last page of the budget booklet, and you see that we've projected out to fiscal year '31, '32, and we've projected a potential deficit of $3 million. And then you go back up to the pension, the pension information, there is a chart of where we think, what we think our unfunded liability payment is going to be in fiscal year '31, '32, it's 5.6 million. So if we didn't have to make that payment, we would have a surplus of $2 million. So in essence, yes, your deficit is your unfunded liability payment. Can we take that out? No.
Thank you. And just to start, thank you for putting together that 10-year look. You know, I know that is not necessarily a standard part of this, but it is very helpful to have, so I really appreciate the extra work to have it in there and help us understand sort of what we're looking at in the long term, especially as I know that one of the mostly fair things people can level at government is that we don't think far enough ahead a lot of the time, so it is very much appreciated. I'll try and give brief, like the vice mayor, I would say I touched every page of this. I don't know if I did that before I met with you today, but I'm glad I got the chance to do it later today. And on the staffing, I'm very happy to see that we are continuing to expand staff and make sure that we're closer to parity with everyone else of how much the staff should be getting paid. You know, I think we could see this and panic and say, we're going to have a deficit, we should stop hiring and, you know, do a bunch of other things. And I'm glad we're not doing that, because so much of our budget is staff because that's how all the work gets done, and you need a lot of people to do it. And I know that a lot of people in the city are already pulling double or triple duty anyway, so it's good to have more, and it's good to pay those people what they're worth and keep them. So I'm very happy to see that. While it will mean we'll have to, you know, figure out how to make up more revenue to keep all of that staff, I think that's a thing worth doing, and it's just a shame that the unfunded liability makes that so complicated. And to say something on the unfunded liability, you know, I thank the Financial Advisory Committee for all their work to think about that and keep us looking at it and make sure that we're going to address it. I'm really hopeful that we can expand our revenue to meet it. That would be my preferred way of doing things. It's something that I suggested a while back, the last time we discussed things to put on the ballot, of we need to expand our general revenue to hit this number at some point, but that's going to be something we're going to be figuring out over the next couple of years. Any other comments from council?
I just wanted to thank you, Heather, for all your work, and also the Financial Committee as well for keeping track of all this, and the subcommittees for looking into things that are going to need to be done. So just wanted to say thank you to all of you for that. I agree with a lot of your comments and hope that we can find more revenue sources and move forward that way without having to minimize our staff, so.
So I'll return to the CERT item I put on the table and just ask if there's any support to ask staff to look into what would be involved, both in amount and source.
I'd be happy to have them look into it.
Okay. I see Vice Mayor Mickey nodding yes.
Yes, sorry, yes. I will verbalize that for the record.
Do you have everything you need from us tonight?
I think so.
Great. Well, once again, thank you very much, especially for being here tonight and walking us through it, when I know you have more important things to be doing at home. Congratulations on the new baby. And thank everybody who is a part of this and financial advisory. Many, it's really helpful to have expertise in a body like that to help us out. And I think that brings us to the end of our study session. You guys okay to go right into the regular? Great. So I will call to order the regular meeting of the City Council, and we will have Council Member Jordan, please read the land acknowledgement.
If you don't have it, I'll back.
Thank you. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of La Chane. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hanson Ramara?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember Lopez's absent. Vice Mayor Mickey?
Here.
And Mayor Tiedemann?
Here. That will bring us to our ceremonial matters, which we have a couple tonight. Here. That will bring us to our ceremonial matters, which we have a couple tonight. We will start with a proclamation recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month. And to accept, we will have Melissa Chapman, the Chief Executive Officer of the JCC East Bay. And I will go In recognition of Jewish American Heritage Month, May 2023, whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is observed during the month of May to celebrate the enduring heritage of Jewish Americans whose values, cultures, and foundational contributions have shaped our character as a nation, and whereas President George W. Bush proclaimed May as Jewish American Heritage Month in 2006 at the request of Congress, urging the President to proclaim a month for the observance of an American Jewish History Month and their contribution to the United States, and whereas the month of May was chosen due to the highly successful celebration of the three hundred and fiftieth anniversary of American Jewish history in May 2004, which was organized by the Commission for commemorating three hundred and fifty years of American Jewish history, and whereas the Jewish American story is an essential chapter of the American narrative that has greatly contributed to the religious, cultural, political, economic, and intellectual advancement of all people by joining together with all faiths to reject ignorance and intolerance, teach empathy and compassion, and root out hatred wherever it exists. And whereas we recognize the Jewish communities continue to be challenged by bigotry, hostility, violence, and discrimination, and that our nation's commitment to religious freedom obligates us to root out prejudice and combat antisemitism to create a more inclusive tomorrow, protecting the diversity that defines who we are as a nation, and preserving the dignity of every human being. And whereas the City of Albany is proud to be a home to many Jewish Americans who contribute greatly to the prosperity and enrichment of our city, and whereas the City of Albany would like to acknowledge and recognize the Jewish Community Center of the East Bay for providing high-quality programs and gathering spaces throughout the East Bay to advance, nurture, and evolve Jewish communal life and contribute to the vitality of the broader community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council does hereby recognize May 2023 as Jewish American Heritage Month, and call upon our community members to honor and learn more about the heritage and contributions of Jewish Americans.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you having me here and for this very strong statement of support. I'm honored to accept this on behalf of the fourth-largest Jewish community in North America. We also happen to be one of the most diverse and fastest-growing Jewish communities in North America. At a time where antisemitism and other forms of hate are all too widespread, your continued support and partnership is more important and meaningful than ever. We welcome everyone at the JCC East Bay. We can be found in Berkeley, and thank you again for having me and for this important proclamation.
Thank you for being here. Is there any public comment on this item? Is there any council comment on this item?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm very grateful that there is such a strong Jewish community in the United States. I know personally, it's enriched my life tremendously, and so I will do what I can to, to keep that community safe.
Thank you. And I'll say, as a proud graduate of the Berkeley JCC after school care for many years, I'm happy to present this, and thank you, Melissa, for being here to accept. That, that brings us to our next proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, which I believe is John. And to accept this proclamation, we will have Liz Revensdorf, President at NAMI East Bay National Alliance on Mental Illness.
In recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2023, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas Mental Health Awareness Month is an opportunity to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote the identification and treatment of mental illness, and whereas mental health helps to sustain individuals' relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change or face adversity, and whereas engaging in prevention, early identification, and early intervention are as effective ways to reduce the burden of mental illness as they are to reduce the burden of other chronic conditions, and whereas there is a strong research that animal companionship, humor, spirituality, religion, recreation, social connections, and work-life balance can help all Americans protect their health and well-being. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health and other chronic health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and community member share the burden of mental health problems, has the responsibility to promote mental, sorry, mental wellness and support, support prevent, support prevent efforts. And whereas the City of Albany would like to recognize and acknowledge the National Alliance of Mental Illness for their ongoing commitment and work to provide advocacy, education, support, and public awareness so that all individuals and families affected by mental illness can build better lives. Now therefore, the City of, the Albany City Council proclaims May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Albany, and calls upon the community, public, and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Albany to recommit increasing awareness and understanding mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need of appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
Seems our person who was supposed to accept this word is not online, but maybe they'll show up and we will recognize them before we are finished with proclamations. Are there any public comment on this item? Or any council comment on this item?
I know if Councilmember Lopez was here, he would likely want to speak on this topic. I will speak on my own behalf. I, to me personally, this is a rather important issue. It's something that came up in our family, where the community really helped us, whether it was the first responders, the police officers, AUSD, and the wonderful work that they do within their organization, the many mental health providers, both in the region, but also locally here, which have helped our family. I would say if you are someone who needs help or feels like they need help, reach out. Reach out to those who, who care for you, for those who you know and respect. But know that there are people out there that will support you and that will help you, whether you are someone who is suffering mental health issues, or you're a family member of someone who is suffering mental health issues. I will say that our family right now, I described this individuals, and I probably described this to most council members, 2013 through 2018 were a really difficult time for our family. I will say that personally, I don't feel like I came out of that dark tunnel until early 2022, because I felt like I was coming out of that tunnel, and then COVID hit us. And so I'm appreciative of this statement. I'm appreciative of all the community members who help us as a community manage these issues and recover from these issues. And so I'm thankful. And I'm very grateful for the mayor to ask me to present this. Of the honest to you, I probably would have preferred if Councilmember Lopez had presented it, because I wouldn't get as, as emotional. But thank you. Thank you, and I appreciate this proclamation.
Thank you. It was very well put.
I appreciate that mental health has become more of a topic of acceptable conversation. I lost my brother to not recovering from mental health problems in 2003. It's a pretty dramatically different time now. So I'm just glad our society's gotten to where it is, and I hope that the progress will continue.
Very well put.
I appreciate that mental health has become more of a topic of acceptable conversation. I lost my brother to not recovering from mental health problems in 2003. It's a pretty dramatically different time now. So I'm just glad our society's gotten to where it is, and I hope that the progress will continue.
Very well put.
I appreciate that mental health has become-
Liz, I think you have an echo going on, but I don't know if you're playing this on another device, but if you can, we'd love to have your comments.
I think it's gotten to where it is, and I hope that the progress will continue.
Liz, I think you have-
Yeah.
Liz, we can't hear you, so if you can turn on your mic, but mute your video so that we're not hearing. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Liz Revensdorf, and I'm the President of NAMI East Bay. We're located on Stanage Avenue. I want to thank you on behalf of all of our mental-
Liz, we can't hear you, so if you can turn on your mic, but mute your video so that we're not hearing. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Liz Revensdorf.
Wow. I didn't think we'd see anything new after three years of the pandemic. I never experienced anything like that before.
Liz, perhaps you, if you want to try to log out and re-log in, and I'll let you back in after. We already have public comment, right? We already have public comment, okay.
We will give Liz a sec to see if she can log back in. And if not, we can always come back to her. I'll just echo what my colleagues have said, and say that I, many of my friends and loved ones have struggled with mental health issues, and I've been, has been very meaningful but unfortunate to support them, that I'm glad that it is more accepted now to seek help, that there are more resources, and that we live in a place where I think most people are aware of these problems and able to help in whatever way they can.
I just want to say that I think every one of us is probably touched by this in one way, shape, or another. And so I really very thankful to have, again, more, more information brought out around it, and more resources, and, you know, more acceptance, so.
We will come back to Liz if she comes back, and we can figure out exactly what's going on in the ether of Zoom. That brings us to our proclamation for National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day. And to accept this, we will have Sergeant Holly Proclamation in recognition of National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Albany Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our community members, and whereas it is important that all members of our community know and understand the duties, responsibilities, sacrifices, and hazards facing their law enforcement officers, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas Albany police officers are committed to the highest professional standard and working in partnership with our community to meet the challenges of reducing crime, creating a safe and welcoming environment, and improving our quality of life for our community and those who visit, and whereas the City of Albany is proud of our police officers and wishes to recognize their commitment to the public safety profession. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby recognizes the week of May 15th, 2023, through May 21st, 2023, as Police Week, and calls upon all community members, civic, and educational organizations to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered dedicated service to their communities. And be it further proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby recognizes May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and we call upon the community of Albany to observe this day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of their duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of the fallen.
Thank you. Say a quick few words. Thank you, Mayor, and Council for recognizing and supporting National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day. This is an important week for law enforcement, as it serves as a reminder to all of us about the sacrifices police officers make each day as we serve our communities. We are honored to serve this city, and thank the community for their support. Thank you so much. That was really, really nice.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Any council comment on this item?
I would just like to thank all those in the department who've chosen to serve our society in this fashion. Thank you very much.
I'll echo that sentiment. That brings us to a proclamation recognizing National Emergency Medical Services Week and Emergency Medical Services for Children Day. And, is that you?
Yes.
And we will have Lieutenant Desmond Smith, the AFFA Vice President, to accept.
In recognition of National Emergency Medical Services Week and Emergency Medical Services for Children Day, May 21st through 27th, 2023, whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the dedicated paramedics of the Albany Fire Department provide exemplary emergency medical care and ambulance transportation to the citizens and visitors of Albany, and whereas the Albany Fire Department personnel are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas the members of emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service, services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, it will be proclaimed that the Albany City Council does hereby recognize the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Emergency Medical Services Week, with a theme where emergency care begins, including the designation of May 24th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services for Children Day, and encourages all Albany residents to recognize and honor the dedication of those who provide day-to-day lifesaving services in our community.
I would just like to say thank you to the council, and thank you to Councilmember Hanson Romero for presenting this to us. As this proclamation, I think aptly states, the Fire Department and paramedics aren't the only people this recognizes, and it also recognizes the Police Department as well. But I wanted to say thank you. We deeply appreciate it, and we truly appreciate both the community's support, as well as the city and the council. So again, thank you very much. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment on this item? Any council comment?
I just want to say you guys have always been absolutely amazing. You know, that's been a personal thing of mine with my family and even myself included. So you guys have always been there for us and so quick and so responsive and, you know, so helpful in the community in so many different ways, and I'm just very thankful to have the departments that we have here to serve our community. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll offer my thanks as someone who has been picked up off the road due to his own failure of operation by Albany's finest. So thank you very much for your service.
And I'll reiterate both on the emergency services and the police department, the incredible work that you all do, both when I decided that I didn't need a car anymore and that that car could be totaled and, you know, the services that I received there and then other situations in which for mental health crises and emergencies, the response and the service that you all provided have been incredible.
And I'll just echo my colleagues. Thank you for everything. I've not been lucky enough to have to ride an ambulance from the Albany Department yet, but it sounds like I should try it. I'll try and break my collarbone again next year. That brings us to our final proclamation, which is recognizing LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. And we will have Britt Tanner from Albany's Pride, an LGBTQIA+ advocacy group for AUSD, and Councilmember Jordan will be presenting.
In recognition of LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, June 2023, whereas the City of Albany prides itself on being a community that celebrates diversity and strives towards inclusion, and whereas the Albany City Council has affirmed that the city welcomes and values all of our diverse community members regardless of where they come from, or who they love, how they worship, how they look, their gender identity, their abilities, their economic status, or how they vote, inviting the entire Albany community to join together in creating a safe and welcoming city, one in which we celebrate our differences and learn from each other, one in which we are proud to raise our children. And whereas the City of Albany has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex community, and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community, and whereas June has become a symbolic month in which the LGBTQIA+ community and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride, and whereas Albany is joining other cities across the United States, recognize and celebrate June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, whereas the City of Albany would like to acknowledge and recognize Albany's pride, LGBTQIA+ advocacy group for Albany Unified School District for their ongoing work to ensure a positive environment for LGBTQIA+ students and parents. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the City Council does hereby recognize the month of June 2023 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Albany, and the progress Pride flag shall be flown June 1st to 30th at Albany City Hall, the Albany Community Center, and the torch located at Solano Avenue and Kierro Boulevard.
And they're apparently online.
Hello to you both. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Kathryn Case Meyer. I'm a member of Albany's Pride, and this proclamation and show of support comes at a really critical time. As you probably know, state and local governments across the country are targeting the LGBTQ+ community, especially our young people, as a way to show and sow division and fear. To date, 19 states have passed a law or policy banning gender-affirming care for youth, and another eight have bills proposed. The council's support and having the Pride flag flying for the month of June will demonstrate to the city that we are working to build unity and a place where, you know, we can all feel at home. And just really appreciate the support, and I'll be happy to see the Pride flag flying. Britt.
Right on.
I just wanted to add on that we appreciate the support that we have gotten from the city. I am very happy with the new Pride crosswalks that are on Solano, Talbot, and Cornell, and hope that we can continue working together to promote pride throughout the city.
Thank you very much for your work, and we'll hold on to this for you to pick up.
Is there any public comment on this item? Is there any council comment on this item?
Yeah, I would like to thank Albany Pride for helping the city to create more visible representation, and it's personal as well. It helps make me feel that the city's a safer place for my daughter, not that I've ever felt it was an unsafe place, but it's most welcome, so thank you.
Yes, I'll echo that. Thank you for all the work. As you mentioned, we're lucky here to be more affirming in how we approach these things than a lot of other places in this country, but that doesn't mean we can always do more. So I appreciate that there is a group that is doing that work in our city. No other comment? I believe that brings us to the end of our proclamations, unless Liz came back. Nope.
She sent an email thanking the council for the proclamation, and she apologized for the technical difficulty.
No worries. Thank you, Liz, for joining us and accepting. That brings us to our City Manager's Report. City Manager, may we please have your report?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to first acknowledge that we have received quite a few applications from our students in our community with regard to the advisory bodies to the City Council, and excited to see that agenda item later in your docket this evening, and wanted to recognize our city clerk for her proactivity in reaching out to the schools and encouraging those applicants. So you'll see that in our e-news, we have an ongoing announcement regarding those appointments, and they remain open until filled, so please continue to provide those applications. And this really reinforces the council's priority of engaging all of our community, including the importance of our youth voice. I will be walking through a few things that are visual in our e-news. Again, through our e-news, you can get the latest and greatest on Albany every week by signing up online on our website, delivered to your email box. Also, please double-check your subscriptions over time. Sometimes we have some oddities in our technology that may disconnect some subscribers, so if you're starting to miss emails, please go back in and check your account. An update on Marin Avenue pavement rehab. We've been announcing this for a handful of weeks now, but the actual closure of a certain section of Marin will be occurring this weekend, Saturday, May 20th through Sunday, May 21st. During this time, intersections undergoing deeper rehabilitation requirements at Evelyn, Masonic Key Route, and Aloney Greenway will need to remain closed overnight to allow time for pavement to set properly. We've done a significant amount of outreach and are continuing to do so, so please be advised of this closure and also potentially the complication as noted at our last meeting by Councilmember Jordan, that Gilman intersection is likely closed as well, so please plan ahead for this. Really appreciate our staff for their proactivity and engagement on the topic, and also the closure to help facilitate the safe crossing of students during the week. We are very proud to announce that Friends of Albany Parks is back. This program unfortunately went into a bit of hiatus during the pandemic. I'm kind of tired of saying that, so it's nice to have a positive spin on these things, and hats off to our Recreation and Community Services Department for finding the resources and mustering their staff together to get this program up and running again. I think it's a critical component of how city staff and our community work collaboratively on shared goals and vision for improvements in ongoing maintenance and stewardship of our parks. The first event will be at Memorial Park this Saturday, and it's an opportunity to really just get out to the park and see the improvements that can be built together over time. We will have a series of programs throughout each park. We have done our annual outreach regarding parcel tax exemptions and rent-to-rebate program. Please expect a postcard in the mail. These are mailed to all city residences, mail addresses within the city. We also have the ability for translation, and we will have two in-person application assistance days at the senior center as we've done in years past. This is a great opportunity for that hands-on assistance as needed, and also staff available to translate into several languages. Those events will occur Tuesday, May 16th, Wednesday, May 24th, from 1:00 to 3:00, and we are also available by appointment to assist folks outside of those events. We had a lovely groundbreaking ceremony for Albany Family Housing. Thank you for everyone that attended. We had a significant turnout. It almost felt like a wedding ceremony. I personally felt SAHA did a fantastic job in organizing, and again, thank you to our staff for assisting in getting the space prepared for the event through our Public Works Department as well as through Community Development Department and City Clerk's Office for the event administration and preparations. I think one of the greatest things that I heard is there'll be another event, so if you miss this one, we will also be fortunate to have a ribbon cutting for the 62 affordable homes for low-income families that will be established at this location. Our Police Department is also continuing to ramp up their outreach as they are able to staff these events and engage directly with our community. Our Next Coffee with a Cop will be Tuesday, May 23rd, from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. at Royal Ground Coffee on Solano Avenue. This is just a casual stop-in, ask some questions, get to know your local officers, and just get those questions answered that you may have. So please stop by if you miss this event. I know they are programming several more, so there will be ongoing opportunities. Also, through our Police Department, the Albany Crisis Team, ACT, had a soft launch, which we are delighted to share. I know this has been months, maybe years, in the making. There's a lot that goes into it and to doing it in the right way with the right partners. So again, thank you to the council for providing the support and leadership to get this program up and running, and through our Police Department for their initiative and foresight to build this relationship and strong program. The program is run by Benita House, which is running similar programs in other East Bay cities, and I mention soft launch because we're really getting folks oriented and understanding how to work through all of the new processes, so more information will certainly be forthcoming on the success of that program. As a reminder, it is a pilot program, so we envision providing regular updates on status and effectiveness and opportunities for enhancing. And finally, just a reminder that AC Transit Survey is ongoing. It sounds like a very important opportunity for users of AC Transit. I've seen the signs up along Solano and also San Pablo. We have invited AC Transit to a council meeting yet to have that scheduled, but hoping that we can also bring that conversation to the dais and to the public. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any follow-up or questions from council? I'll just ask, I was very happy with the groundbreaking event as well, and I know that we had staff taking pictures, so I'm curious if we are posting those anywhere or getting them out there?
Yes, our photographer is in the back room as we speak, so I would like to appreciate that. I know Councilmember Hanson Romero remarked that our photographer is always behind the scenes, so getting him in the scene. So thank you, Jeremy, for the photos, and yes, we will make sure to get those in an accessible format. I know we had a few in our e-news, but I think we have a file of more.
I've threatened to steal the camera.
Great. If anyone attending would like to ask a question about or comment on the City Manager's Report, please raise your hand. You'll have one minute. If you're on the phone, press star nine. This is for questions and comments on the City Manager's Report only. If you have questions or comments on matters not on the agenda, the time for that is next. And this and all other comments, please address the council and not other attendees in respect to each person who's spoken, as we want everyone to feel comfortable speaking. Do we have any public comment?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeremiah. Regarding the City Manager's Report, regarding the AC Transit, I believe on your slide it said concerns, needs, and one other word on there that's relevant. I spoke with the AC Transit bus driver that drives the 18 route, and she said that the schedule for the route still has not changed. They're still scheduled at 25 miles per hour. And she says actually she drives quickly down Solano because she takes her break in the Village by Sprouts, by the baseball field area. And she said, you know, the quicker they do the route, the longer break they get. So one of my concerns is why hasn't anybody from the city let AC Transit know the speed's reduced to 20 miles an hour? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. City Manager, I don't know if you have a report on that?
Sure, I'll follow up with AC Transit to remind them of the set speed limit.
Thank you. I think the thing that may have been seen that was on AC Transit, I think they have a survey out that everyone should take that they're trying to rebalance their services to make them useful, so if you have feedback and use AC Transit, please fill it out. That brings us to Good of the City. This is for attendees to provide counsel, comments, information, and questions on items that are not on the agenda. Please raise your hands now or press star nine. Because of state law known as the Brown Act, we cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda unless there are extraordinary circumstances. Rather, items here may be referred to future staff agendas or for comment. City Clerk?
Good evening, City Council, City Manager, City Clerk. Again, this is Jeremiah. Just wondering if there's ever going to be a Portuguese month? I know every month we have different proclamations. I mean, I'm 50% Portuguese. My dad's 100%. My grandparents came from Portugal, and I was just wondering if the Portuguese culture was ever going to be recognized during a proclamation. Also, I really think it'd be a great idea to repave the upper part of Solano. I know Solano stroll happens usually once a year, and a lot of people walk, and I noticed there's a lot of tripping hazards in the middle of the street, so if the streets close down for Solano stroll, there's a lot of potholes and a lot of, you know, safety hazards to be walking. Such a crowded, such a crowded day, a lot of people aren't really looking at the ground. They're kind of, you know, looking around, people watching, trying to not bump into people, not paying too much attention to the cracks on the street. So I just think it would be a really good idea someday in the hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of dollars for the budget, could we please somehow repave Upper Solano? Because it's on a slope, and that makes it even more dangerous. But thank you for repaving Lower Solano a little while back. Looks really nice, and it would be nice to see Upper Solano look so nice someday. Let's see, one minute left. Oh, regarding the food, the food bank at the Recreation Department, I actually applied two months ago, and when I applied, the And when I applied, the people from the Recreation Department, they actually referred me to the City Manager. And I was kind of wondering why. I said, does every person who applied for the food thing get referred to the City Manager? And the lady said, no, just you, Jeremiah. So I felt kind of indifferent, and I'm kind of confused on what's going on while people from the Recreation Department say they can't even talk to me. I'm referred to the City Manager. So maybe City Manager, if you can get back to me on that, I really appreciate it. My email address is inguelo@yahoo, if you want to let me know what's going on. So yeah, and the food program maxes out at 130 people, and so that's about half a percent of Albany. And regarding the low-income housing that's being built with SAHA, I think we should make the food bank more robust. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. You might not have it off the top of your head, but do we have, I know that we are regularly repaving all streets that are in a sort of queue. I don't know if we have anything pressing on Solano slash, I know that was Upper Solano, so that might be the Berkeley bit.
Yeah, I don't think we're prepared to address that this evening.
That brings us to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval, the staff recommendation will be adopted. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or member of the audience requests that discussion. Are there any items that anyone in council would like to discuss separately?
I cannot vote on item 76, as it's Marin Avenue, which is within 500 feet of my house.
Great, thank you. Any other separate discussion?
74.
74. Is there anyone from the public who would like to discuss an item separately? This will just be for telling us the item, then we'll come back to you when we discuss it. Okay, then we'll go to 74.
I was just curious if this was a student?
This is for my
Oh, this is for your
My council seat.
Seat, okay. I was just curious, because now that we've had this new influx of students and stuff, I'm getting excited, because I know I still have to finish going through some. But anyway, that was just my question.
Yes, and a good chance to remind everybody that some of us still have appointments to make on some of these, and luckily, we're getting new applications in. And I know I personally still have some, so I'm not without blame. So everyone, make your appointments. If there is no other discussion, I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar less 76.
I move passage of the consent calendar less item 76.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, can we please have the roll?
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
And Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
The motion carries.
And I will now take a separate motion for item 76.
I will move item 76.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. City Clerk, can we please have the roll?
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Mickey?
Epstein.
Not the right answer.
No, I think it's, you recuse.
Recuse, sorry, recuse.
The motion carries.
I've had that situation before, you have to say the right thing. Thank you. That brings us to our public hearing, which we have one item, an ordinance relating to mobility-sharing devices and authorization to enter into a temporary operating agreement. Can we please have staffs report?
Yes, thank you, City Council. Good evening. Let me just pull up my slides really quickly. Okay, lovely. Okay, so tonight, we are going to be talking about an ordinance to regulate shared scooter or micro mobility systems. These are the scooters that people can rent out using their phones for, you know, a few minutes at a time or longer. We have one of these systems currently in the city of Albany. It's VO Mobility. I think we have a rep here tonight for VO Mobility. So I'll start just with a little bit of background. In October of last year, the City Council passed an urgency ordinance regulating shared mobility systems. And that was done as an urgency ordinance so that those regulations could go into effect before the launch of VO, which happened one day after the urgency ordinance was passed. And the city entered into a temporary operating agreement with VO in lieu of a permit since the permit requirements weren't finished at that point. However, it's best practice to bring these types of urgency ordinances back as a regular ordinance, you know, when time permits, and so that's what we're doing tonight. And so I'll talk a little bit about what that looks like and also just how it's been going with the shared mobility system so far. So I'll start there. So we do have some data. We have a whole data dashboard relating to the use of these devices and how many are out in the city at given times and where they're going and all sorts of things like that. I've just pulled a few examples here to give you a sense. So this is the chart showing the number of devices in the city on average during each month that they've been in use since October of last year. As you can see, during the winter, they were averaging around 15 devices at a time, and more recently, it's been closer to five. We've been told that they're expecting to increase the number of devices again now that the rain is finally starting to stop. But not a huge number throughout the city, as you've probably been able to tell just by walking around. And then we've also seen a fair bit of usage. Last I checked today, there were a little over 1,000 trips total since the launch in mid-October, totaling over 1,800 miles of travel. And each trip averaged out to about 13 minutes. And we've received one complaint to city staff so far about improper parking. And I don't believe that we have heard of other, sorry, I'm getting out of the mic here. I don't believe we've heard of VO receiving other complaints. So it seems like it's just one at this point. And so all that said, we haven't seen any sort of major issues or gaps within the urgency ordinance that was passed in October. And so the ordinance that we've brought tonight, which is number 2023-03, is basically identical to the urgency ordinance in terms of all of the pieces of it. It has various regulations around, you know, where people can ride, not letting them on sidewalks and that sort of thing, maximum miles per hour and safety regulations, where they can be parked, what happens if they're parked improperly, and all those sorts of pieces. I won't go into all the details there, but it's all the same as the ordinance that has been in place since October. And the only pieces we've really changed are the ones relating to the urgency itself. We've taken out all that urgency language so that it looks just like a regular ordinance. So that's the basics of it. And then the other main change that we've made, or the change that we're recommending, has to do with fees. When the urgency ordinance was passed, we didn't have any fee recommendations at that point, and we haven't been charging any fees as of yet. However, there are several points throughout the ordinance that call for a fee. And so these are the six that we're recommending tonight. And we've set them up so that where possible, they're based on existing fees in our fee schedule, and so the amounts can change with those fees over time. So we don't have to focus on micro mobility as its own thing every time we relook at the fees. So I'll go through these quickly. For the permit application fee, we recommend 10 hours of professional staff time, which currently is $1,003. And then for permit renewals, which would be successive years for continued operation, two hours of staff time, or $201 currently. For an annual fee, we are recommending not to charge an annual fee for now. The thought behind that was first of all that we've seen that there hasn't been a huge impact on our city infrastructure and staff time so far since there's still not a huge number of devices in the city. You know, lately, it's been mostly about five. And even when it's been higher, it's not a ton. And then also because, you know, this type of transportation service is something that the city is interested in promoting. It's part of our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan to promote this kind of shared electric mobility. And because Albany's not a huge market, and these companies are still pretty new, and they're trying to build up a base for themselves, we were concerned that if we charged too much of a fee, that it might actually drive these businesses out of the city entirely. You know, we're not Berkeley or Oakland, so it might be harder to bring business here if the fees were too high potentially. So that was the thinking behind recommending no annual fee at the moment at least. The final three fees are related to parking issues, so these would only be charged if there was an improper parking violation. So the first would be if a vehicle or a device is improperly parked and the company does not remove it within three hours. And the fee would be the same as the obstruction of streets and sidewalks fee, which is currently $103. After three days, if it's still not removed, then city staff would be able to remove the device, and the fee for that would be equal to one hour of maintenance staff time and one vehicle hour, which is currently $97. And then after three more days, if the removed device has not been taken by the company, then the city can charge a device storage fee. We didn't have anything in our fee schedule that was similar to that, so we used the amount that was used by Emeryville, which is $250. So that's the thinking behind all of the fees here. And the staff recommendation is twofold. First, to introduce and waive her first reading, ordinance number 202303, which amends the section of the municipal code relating to mobility-sharing services. And then secondly, providing direction to staff to incorporate those fees that I just mentioned into the upcoming master fee schedule, which would be brought back for City Council approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
I have some, since all of this was kind of put together in the emergency status of things. I'm just curious about the liabilities and insurance behind all of this and how that was put together in this package, and if there's any changes as to that as well. Because I know that there's been recent news reports about some with having battery issues and some other people just, if people were to get hurt on the street with them, I just want to know where we're at with that.
Yeah, that's a great question. There are liability and insurance requirements that would be part of the permitting process. All of the providers would be required to get a permit from the city in order to operate, and that includes liability and insurance requirements. And like the rest of the ordinance, they're based off of cities nearby. Pretty much all of this was copied from Berkeley, Oakland, and Emeryville. So that's really what it's based off of. I don't remember all of the details on that at the moment. Maybe Justin remembers more than I do. But I do know that it's in there, and it's similar to surrounding cities.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and I ask this not with any agenda, one way or the other, but there's a provision here that the city engineer may establish conditions, including but not limited to locations for parking, riding, speed limits, deployment, so on. To your knowledge, has the city engineer done that or had cause to do any of that?
So the thinking behind that specific language is to make it easy to adjust as we see fit, and so it can be adjusted quickly if necessary. So some pieces of that are already within the permit requirements, like, you know, requiring that it can't be parked in certain areas, and there is a speed limit of 15 miles per hour currently. And then there are some things we thought, oh, eventually, we might want to put something in about that, and so it doesn't have anything in there yet. But yeah, at this point, everything that you see in the ordinance and the permit requirements is all there is at the moment.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'd forgotten that the permit had a 15 mph limit. Thank you.
A question about annual fees in other communities. In your research, did you research what Berkeley's charging or El Cerrito?
Yeah, so El Cerrito, to my knowledge, doesn't have any so far, but Berkeley does, as well as Oakland and Emeryville. I did look at what they were charging, and there was some variation, but we thought that they all seemed a bit high, considering how many devices there were in Albany and also kind of our position geographically and population-wise. I could pull up the numbers if you're curious. I don't have them on my screen right now, but I could get them.
I don't think I need the numbers yet. When we get to the discussion, we'll see.
Are there any questions or comments from the public?
Oh, there's a, please.
Hello, my name's Monica DeLulo. I'm the Policy and Partnerships Manager for VO. I'm based in Oakland. And to answer like a couple of the questions that you all had, if you don't have them written down, Michelle, I do have all of the fees memorized. I get reminded about them pretty frequently at work. So if you have questions, let me know. We initially kind of launched under this emergency premise. We'd been working with former Councilmember Janelle Gary to help facilitate travel between UC Berkeley and the UC Housing Offsite location in Albany. Their transit service, I believe, is going to be interrupted, and so I'd been working with our contacts at UC Berkeley to help just kind of mitigate the potential problematic issues that having an interrupted transit service could have. And we haven't necessarily deployed into the city of Albany. We do rebalance vehicles, which means that we go and maintenance them or move them if the battery is dead or if it's improperly parked or parked for too long. But we have not taken an aggressive, I guess, approach in deploying into the city because of this kind of like more urgent nature of the initial program. And so we really have just allowed organic ridership to come into the city, and that's kind of why UC sees such low numbers. And we wanted to make sure to not kind of shock the community, I guess, for lack of better phrasing. I know some micro mobility companies, that's kind of the MO, but our company really started in smaller cities and on university campuses, and then we've slowly ramped up to larger cities, and we're now in New York, Seattle. We're in Oakland, Berkeley, and Emeryville as well. And we're really just trying to build a connected transportation network across the East Bay. And so that's kind of why things have been slightly limited thus far, but we really wanted to have the support of the community before moving forward and taking a more active approach to deploying into the city.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other public comment?
Yes, this is kind of, hasn't been discussed at all, but I was curious what kind of accident or injury data there is for these things. I know there are not very many of these in Albany yet, but if anybody has traveled around the University of California, you are, it's like bees buzzing around the streets, all the scooters going around there. And I worry for the safety of the drivers, both the motor vehicle drivers and the, what do you call them, mobility drivers. So I'm just curious what kind of accident statistics there are, and if there's anything that can be done to mitigate any potential accident hazard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I don't know if we have accident data. I know there was only one complaint, but if you want to speak to that?
I don't have any specific accident data.
That's what I figured. Any discussion from, go for it.
I could offer something in that regard. This prompted by a written comment we received about accidents, crashes in New York City that I guess have injured and resulted in death and battery fires and whatnot. So I did a little searching around and found this press release from November 14, 2022. This is from the NYC Department of Transportation. The head banner or the headline is "E-Scooters NYC DOT Announces Micro Mobility Pilot in East Bronx Will Move Toward Becoming a Long-Term Program As New Report Details Success." The New York City Department of Transportation Commissioner Donna C. Rodriguez today released a request for proposals to expand micro mobility, the capacity to make a pilot that began last year in East Bronx permanent. The agency also released a report, so there is a report that the NYC DOT did regarding the pilot, including safety metrics highlighting the success of that pilot, which has logged more than 1.4 million rides with no fatalities and few serious injuries since it launched in August 2021. So this is somewhat disparate from the comment we received. The comment didn't have a source. One surprise I have is that that might have regarded all e-scooters, not just shared e-scooters, which could be, you know, different population, different usage, not have speed limiting requirements on them, who knows? I don't know. But they're having success within New York, so I would directly be able to look at that, look for that report.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I'll just comment on some of the other written input we received, which was a request to put in an age requirement. All the micro mobility, shared micro mobility companies that are in the area, as well as in New York in that pilot, have an 18-year-old or older requirement already built in. So I don't know if we have that in the permitting or not, but I don't think we need to require doing that because they do that for their own legal reasons. So kind of a law on the market is taking care of that. There was a question about a prohibition, including a prohibition on riding e-scooters on sidewalks or a fine. So I reached out to the city manager, thank you city manager, and other staff involved. They pointed me to the appropriate state vehicle code that already prohibits riding e-scooters on sidewalks and the fine for doing so that is set by the county court. So that's already well in hand. And so with that, I think the program we have is working, and I thank VO for bringing your service to our lovely city here.
So I raised the question about annual fees in other communities. I completely agree with staff that, given the level of ridership that we have and usage, I don't want to put any impediments to businesses considering starting up or continuing to provide services in Albany. But I do wonder, is there, don't want us, on the other hand, being in a situation where other providers come in and shock the system by placing hundreds of mobility devices in our community, and then we're scrambling to think about, well, maybe we do need an annual fee. And so one question I would have for staff is whether or not to look into the possibility of saying at 100 average users a month or something like that, a fee applies. But if you're under that, you get a pass. So as the mobility programs start up and as they start to pick up, there's no fee, but at some point, a fee applies. It's part of the reason why I didn't ask necessarily for specifics of the fees, because I don't know that we necessarily need to match our neighbors in terms of what the exact fee is, but just the idea that at some point, when there are, let's say, 100 monthly riders or devices on average, our call services are going to get more frequent, our requests for services are going to get more frequent. And so just being prepared that if we are fortunate enough to have providers that are providing that much mobility services, that we're just making sure that we're getting at that point an annual fee. So it's just something to consider.
I like that idea. And maybe to ask VO representatives to see if it's all right here. Have you heard of any annual fees that are structured in that manner? Have you encountered anything like that before?
Not necessarily about structure.
You might, I'm sorry, I hate to make you get up again, but it seems like most of the people maybe aren't in the room, so.
I haven't heard of any other cities kind of structuring it in that kind of manner. I think Albany is in a unique position where it's kind of a thorough fair. You've got BART stations kind of in either city next door. You've got other, like, tons of mobility hubs, tons of people kind of moving around coming through the city. So I don't think it would be out of the question to create something new like that. I would just say potentially leaving it open for like the first permit year to other operators to come in or for us to deploy more devices, to just start to gather some data first to understand if 100 monthly active users or devices on average deployed into the city is the number that makes sense to do that at. Maybe it's lower, maybe it's higher. Other types of fee structures that cities have looked at are per-trip fees, so like a 25 cent per trip or 10 cent per trip fee, which sounds negligible at the vehicle numbers right now, but if you start to have more ridership, it could add up. And then it's really incumbent on both the program managers at the city and at the, obviously the company is wanting to do this too, is to just drive ridership and to encourage people. The impetus of micro mobility is really to get people out of their cars and into scooters and into bikes and get people comfortable doing things like riding bikes instead of taking their cars or walking around. So it's a way to encourage the city to incentivize more ridership and the providers to incentivize more ridership.
While we have the representative there, can I ask a question? So another question I had was, I was realizing, you mentioned that you primarily are focusing on the university. Has VO done any programs where they work with larger apartment buildings that have been built to kind of make sure that there are a number of devices at large apartment buildings?
We haven't in Albany, but we do that in several other cities where we work directly with the private apartment buildings. We don't deploy onto private property for obvious reasons. We deploy onto kind of city manager, city-owned property. But we would be happy to make ourselves available to any company that's looking to do that. My only concern would be if they're on, I'm thinking of like the apartment buildings north on kind of the border of El Cerrito almost, like, there are some large apartment buildings over there. People would want to maybe ride north to the BART station, and currently, we don't have a contract to operate in El Cerrito, so I wouldn't want to create an impediment where people are kind of parking on the edge of the geofence there. Definitely something to explore as we continue to expand into other cities as well.
We have a new, we have a project that hopefully will get built in the near future, near our northern border, near El Cerrito. And it would be wonderful to provide the new tenants of those buildings with other mobility options, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And us, along with, I know, the other providers provide in the East Bay low-income discount programs, and so people can apply to those. And if they qualify for affordable housing, they automatically can qualify for those low-income access programs. And so we like to do events and outreach to those apartment buildings, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other council questions?
Yeah, I think we've, the city's gotten, been fortunate in that VO was the first company, because I can say I've been in other nearby cities and there's other companies and their scooters are kind of randomly wherever, on the sidewalk and whatnot. So I do think we've been fortunate to have a company that takes a slower and more responsible approach. So thank you. I appreciate that. But I do see the concern you're raising that one of these other companies could come in with, you know, 200 devices and scatter them around. So probably good to have some sort of backstop there. I would tend to favor a device, structuring it on how many devices there are rather than how many rides there are or how many users there are, since devices that take up the physical space. And I think from when Lime was here, I think that's, the Lime bikes, there were some Lime scooters, very few, very short amount of time. My expectation is the space they take up and how they're parked is more likely to be the source of complaints than other things. And so that correlates to how many devices there are.
I was just thinking to myself, it would be a permit basis, so we wouldn't necessarily have to give a permit to many other companies. We could have some sort of a restriction on, or a limit. We're only, you know, maybe we only permit up to so many different providers or something like that. So that might be another way of looking at that, too.
So currently, Berkeley does have a requirement that they will only permit three providers. And so we're expecting that there wouldn't be any providers that want to operate in Albany, but not in Berkeley. So that's why we haven't included anything to that effect, but we certainly could. I suppose if El Cerrito and Richmond have lots of providers, it's possible that we could get some more than three, but.
Thank you for that clarification. That makes a lot of sense to me. I think it's good we're thinking about some of these things, but I don't think we need to regulate all of this out, you know, way into the future, considering that we're at a fairly early stage. So, you know, I think having a fee if we get up to that space or, you know, having something, limiting number of permits if we need to, I think these are things that we can figure out when and if we need them. I'm happy to do that, and I feel pretty confident that staff will come back to us if they're like, our rides are ballooning and we're not charging any fees. We should charge some fees. So I would be pretty happy with that, but I don't know if you have other thoughts.
Well, I guess, yeah, so a question for staff. If another company shows up and wants to deploy 300 devices, there's 300 blocks or sides of blocks in Albany? Is the city sort of legally committed to the permitting system it has at that point? I mean, I doubt we can come in and, at that point, change the structure and say, no, you've got to pay a fee. So I think if we're going to do it, we need to do it.
That's my worry. My worry is that someone comes in requesting a permit, wants to put out 300 devices.
Right.
Our permit fee structure is what it is when they've applied for the permit.
And they take every bike parking space that exists and, yeah, so I would like to have a backstop.
I think we got an answer. Ding ding ding.
In the East Bay, we have a lock-to requirement, so all of our devices are outfitted with a locking mechanism. And in other cities, Berkeley only allows providers to deploy up to one device per bike rack that is agnostic of, if there's another scooter that's already deployed there, you cannot deploy there. And so the number of bike racks essentially limits the parking options and deployment availability. Obviously, people can ride them to bike racks and park them there, but if there's a limited number of bike racks, if Albany implores a similar requirement, in Oakland, it's two and they have to be on the same side to allow for folks to park on the other side with their personal bikes. It would essentially limit the availability of parking and limit the deployment options and so kind of create a ceiling.
And do devices can all, don't have to park in a rack? Right, I mean, they have to park at some physical object that they can lock to, but it could be a signpost or something else as well. Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
The city regulates, Berkeley regulates some things that can be locked to and specifically some things that cannot be locked to.
Okay. That sounds like a pretty good solution. And did you say it's one scooter per bike rack of any vendor or one scooter of each vendor?
One scooter of any vendor.
Any vendor, okay. Well, I think that's a pretty good solution. Thank you for your encyclopedic knowledge. How does that sound vice mayor?
Yeah, I think that sounds reasonable in terms of providing some form of limitation on the number of scooters that we might expect.
Yeah.
Although I hope at some point we have an abundance of bike parking spaces. We can revise the master fee schedule of that.
Yeah.
Now.
I don't want to interrupt, but I see muttering from, are we off topic or is there, are we good?
No, I was just trying to figure out if you were trying to limit it to parking at just bike racks, then we would need to modify the ordinance as written. That was the only.
Oh, okay.
Hi, I'm Justin Freed, Transportation Sustainability Manager. Just wanted to clarify, we are, under the ordinance that's proposed, able to limit the number of devices deployed. So we could, in issuing a permit, decide we want to issue a permit for a certain number of devices being deployed. Of course, someone could ride a device in from an adjacent jurisdiction, but that would be able to limit the immediate impact of a new operator if we were foreseeing issues.
That's great. Thanks for letting us know. I still think the one device per rack is probably a useful thing to have in the quiver, which is, the intent was not to limit it to bike parking only at racks, but.
I would offer that if that was guidance staff used in making a determination on the permit, I would be okay with it, but I don't know that necessarily needs to be in the ordinance. Staff is going to have to make a call based on something unless we want to really script it. And then, following up to Mayor Tiedemann's comment about the fees, given that we have something that is helping us watch how many things are going to get deployed, it will give us an opportunity at some point to reevaluate if a lot are deployed, to relook at the master fee schedule, and at that point, apply it the next time they have to apply for the permit. So I am glad that we had this discussion, but I am comfortable with the ordinance and the master fee schedule as is.
I'll second.
Is that motion? Do you want to phrase?
Sorry, I'll turn that into a mo.
No, no, I appreciate you moving us.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendations on both the ordinance and the master fee schedule changes.
And I'll second.
If I could ask a question. So does staff have a latitude to restrict the number of devices that are parked to one device per bike rack? Not restricting all parking only to bike racks, but when their device is parked at a bike rack, to only have one to be parked?
Yes, I think, I think in the way that it's written, as Justin said, we could make that a requirement of the permit, because we've provided a lot of flexibility to change the permit language as needed. So I don't think we would have to change the ordinance for that.
Yeah, I guess that comes out of that city engineer.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
I will add, though, that the one question that I have now is, does the city have easily on hand the number of bike parking, bike parking that we have? It's just a number that I'd like to know.
Somewhere, there is a total amount of bike racks that is available. I can get that to you at some point.
I can tell you, I know there's like 73 bike, bike racks, bike-shaped bike racks.
I thought there were more. I thought we were going to have like 84.
Maybe I'm out of date.
It's larger than that.
You have a motion and a second on the floor, so that's.
Sorry. City clerk, there's been a motion and a second. Can we please call the roll?
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for being here and answering some questions. That brings us to our last substantive item, our new business, which is student and student-affiliated appointments to city advisory bodies. Anne, is this you?
Good evening, council. The item brought before you is to hopefully aid in facilitating the appointments and ratification for city advisory body, city council as a whole seats. Council has recently adopted resolution ordinance updating the policy regarding student and student-affiliated appointments to city advisory bodies. And with the continuous various means of communication and outreach on vacancies of these council as its whole seats, the city clerk office received submissions to apply for these seats, including high school students. And thank you to the council's, council members taking the time to review the application and sending in recommendations. So we have several recommendations for, we have more recommendations than the seats needs to be appointed. And it looks like we have several of the applicant online and here in person. Next, if the council's ready, I can go into a bit about the process for the appointment in terms of voting, or if you guys want to discuss first, and then up to you guys.
Please explain the process.
Okay. So for Climate Action Committee, since we received just one recommendation for an adult who's affiliated with students, if the council so chooses, this one can be just a motion with a second to ratify the appointment. And similarly, for Parks Recreation and Open Space Commission, we receive And similarly, for Parks, Recreation and Open Space Commission, we received one recommendation for one, one high school student and an adult affiliated with student. If the council so chooses, these two appointments for Park, Recreation and Open Space Commission can also be ratified with a motion and vote. As for Policing Commission and for Rise Commission, because there are more recommendations than the number of seats, I created a ballot listing the nominees. There are two columns. The first column lists the nominees for high school student seats, and the second column lists the nominees for high school students or adult affiliated with student seat. And we can repeat the process if there's a need for tiebreaker. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, and thank you for thinking about this ahead of time and putting it together. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none. Any public comment?
No.
Okay, bringing it back for council discussion. We may want to start by saying some things, but, you know, we can discuss and then vote, we can vote and then discuss, or we may have to discuss after voting if we don't quite figure it all out, so.
Can I ask staff a question first?
Please do.
Sorry. The Rise Commission, in my, my understanding is that they meet the first Thursday of the month?
Third Thursday.
Sorry?
Third Thursday.
Third Thursday. So this week?
Yes. Well, this week, there's not a public meeting. Because we're waiting for more.
Perfect.
Members to be appointed.
So I ask that only in that there are a lot of candidates, and we are missing a council member. And I would ask if we, as a council, before we get into voting, would consider on Rise, we would be able to make nominations at the next meeting, assuming that we all can be here, in time for the, for the, for the commissioners to be seated for their meeting in June.
I'm sorry, did you say Rise Commission? Sorry, I got confused with Policing Commission. Rise is the first Tuesday of the month.
I see. So that would be very, very tight. Just recognizing that.
The sixth.
Just recognizing that Councilmember Lopez made a recommendation for the Rise Commission and is not here to take part in that commission in particular.
Looking at the calendar, we do have a city council meeting, I believe, the day before that meeting. Am I correct, Anne?
Yes.
Is that enough turnaround time? It's hours.
Not really.
Okay, okay.
Considering that. Because I'm, I agree, it would be ideal to, because Councilmember Lopez did make recommendations, I was thinking what a shame it was that they were not going to be here to vote for them, but I'm also sensitive to if we want them to be at that meeting.
Right. I still feel it would be appropriate to wait. I don't believe that necessarily means that the Rise Commission has to wait another month to meet. They technically have a, I believe they technically have a quorum now, or they will with my appointment.
They will with your appointment.
Which we already adopted, so we accept it. So they have four members now. So if we pause to make this decision tonight, they can still meet. I recognize that that's messy for staff and for the commission, that the commission will start and they won't have necessarily as many filled seats as possible. But in, again, Councilmember Lopez made a recommendation, and if we only had two recommendations for the two seats, I would have less of an issue.
I just want to pop in there because, you know, I was on the subcommittee with Councilperson Lopez, and one of the things that we talked about was wanting to make sure that this started together as a whole. And that was a very important thought process. We did not want our students to kind of get left behind in the shuffle and come in half, you know, not knowing what had started. So I just want to make that suggestion, and I also just want to add on to that, regardless of all of these, I just want to remind us all that one of the things that I felt was very important, and I think a lot of us felt was very important, that we gave the kind of highest priority to the students to give them the opportunity to serve. And so therefore, if we have certain areas that have two students that have put in applications, I would like to see it go to those two students prior to an adult. And that's what I'm, just want to remind everyone that that was something that we had talked about, so.
I had a question. Seeing that the individual seat that you would appoint to, you've not made an appointment yet, and I think there's three, three of these individuals who've applied and have been nominated that I think are very, very strong. I don't know if you're considering appointing any one of these, or if you have somebody else in mind. I know you don't have to tell me anything, you don't have to say anything one way or the other.
I can say I haven't fully looked at all of them yet, and that's why I haven't made a decision.
Okay. I guess I ask that because that might help untie the knot a little bit. I mean, because I nominated, and there's two students that I very much want to have on, and I also nominated an adult for the adult seat. So that's why I'm trying to suss out what might be possible here.
Are there three students?
There are three students.
Rise, yes.
Yeah.
I'll say for my part, I would just agree with Councilmember Hanson Romero. I would love to see more students than I was thinking I was going to have to be going and pitching all of these at the high school, which I haven't had to do luckily because we've gotten a lot of interest. So it's very nice that we have gotten even more interest than we expected, and I want to recognize that and have as many students in there as possible. Vice Mayor, thoughts?
Well, maybe, maybe to move the process along, since we've got four of these, we can get some of it out of the way. I mean, I could move the climate action and park track and open space.
Please do.
You could, or you did?
I could. I'm specifically saying I could.
Because I would second if you did.
Okay. I didn't want to make the motion without sort of blowing up the process. We've got this nice ballot that's been prepared, so if people really want to, you know, okay. Well, so with that, I will move the appointment of Katie Vigil McLanahan as an adult who is affiliated with a student at Cornell School, quite involved in Cornell School, to the Climate Action Committee. And I'll move the appointment of Jeremy Chen, who is a high school student, to the Park, Track and Open Space Commission, as well as Martin Oji as an adult who is affiliated with a student.
And I'll second.
It moved and seconded. City Clerk, can we please have the roll?
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay.
That was the easy one.
Down.
Yeah, I will note on climate action, we actually already have two high school students. So my nominee is Commissioner Mohammed. And then we, previous to this, as a council nominated Commissioner Fissou. So there are two student representatives.
I don't know if anyone wants to discuss specifically the other two, or if we want to vote, or if there's a suggestion that we table either of these until Councilmember Lopez can join us. I'm not sure where we want to land on that.
I think I would, for Policing Commission, it looks like we just have the two students, so I'd like to see Alex and Aiden be appointed to that. Should I make?
I think we can, we can use our fancy little ballot if we want. Or if you, I guess we could also do it if you want to make a motion and it got a second, then we could vote on it and see if it passes or fails if we wanted to skip.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Alex and Aiden. Is it Lee or La, Lee?
Lee.
Lee and you, Aiden you.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, can we please have the roll?
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for moving us along. I don't know if we have a similar motion or any discussion on the Rise appointments. If we don't.
Well, I guess.
And if we'd like to do it tonight, then I suggest we use the ballot, but if we have any other.
Well, okay, so here's the thing. Seeing that there's the three students and knowing that I still haven't appointed anybody, I would make a motion to appoint all three of the high school students, but one would be my, how would that work, Anne?
That's fine.
Is that okay? Okay. So I would make the motion to.
Let me just, give me a second because I want to make sure the agenda allows for you to make your appointment as opposed to.
Thank you.
Which is what I think you were.
I was about to ask if we were within our language, yeah.
It's the first.
Tuesday, first Tuesday of the month.
Doesn't really, it doesn't really look like it would allow for your individual appointment. But I don't know if you could share your thoughts such that on June 5th, it could be on consent.
So Rise doesn't need to be ratified. So if you can just choose the two, which is the council as a whole appointment, that could be ratified tonight, and whoever's left, or if you want to do it vice versa, whoever you choose as your appointee, then make a motion for the other two students to be council as a whole.
Okay.
And then you can make your appointment, and that will be effective right away. It doesn't have to wait for the next council meeting to be ratified.
So you could just announce that after the, after the appointment that is, the council makes, and then provide that information to staff as well? If that makes sense.
Okay, I think I'm following, so let me, all right, so I'm going to make a motion to appoint Erin and is it Ife? Ife? I'm so sorry if I'm mispronouncing a name, as the ones, as.
As the two councils.
As the two council as a whole. So that's my motion.
I will second that.
It has been moved and seconded. City Clerk, can we please call the roll?
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
And Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Apologies, we did not use your ballot.
We'll take care of getting in touch with Charlotte then after. Do I need to say anything?
I think now that we voted, you can say whatever you want.
Okay, so, so.
I was really nervous with you saying things before we voted. That would be, you talk, you're talking about something with four of us.
So Charlotte, I will be appointing Charlotte as my.
Appointee.
Appointee for Rise.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Anne.
And thank you. That's counted as received.
If I can make one comment, for, for those applicants who have not been appointed, I'm noticing that Transportation still has two seats open, particularly for those who were thinking about Rise, if you're thinking from an equity standpoint, Transportation will be taking on the Active Transportation Plan. And one of my goals is to make sure that we actually have an equity lens in all of our commissions. And so for those of you who applied to Rise specifically from an equity standpoint, please consider the Transportation Commission as well. Active Transportation Plan will look at the entire city and ask, how do we make sure that our mobility options are equitably distributed across the city and equitably implemented? So please consider applying for the Transportation Commission.
We also have Arts Committee.
And the Arts.
Two students.
I was going, I was going to mention that, as I also think we need to make an appointment to the Arts Committee. So I'll encourage anyone who applied for this to, please, look at other vacancies as there's lots of interesting work to be done. Unless there's any other comments, I believe that brings us to item 12, which is Council's subcommittee reports and reports on appointed representation of Albany at other meetings. I will start over here with the Vice Mayor, if he's already.
I really love Anne's process of rotating who starts.
Would you like me to start over here with Councilmember Hanson Romero?
I did not attend the last meeting because it conflicted with the groundbreaking, and I wanted to be there, so I had excused myself from that meeting. So no, no report for me.
Rose?
I attended a meeting of the Programs, Policy and Legislative, or Legislation Committee of Alameda CTC, but I don't think there's anything particular to report on that here.
Okay. Okay, I've got a couple. We had a East Bay Community Energy Board meeting. We did another energy prepay, which is just a way of basically contracting for energy ahead of the ti, ahead of time and reducing our, what we're paying for it, which is always great. And we talked about our budget. UBC is very healthy and has a surplus, which we're deciding how to invest to help the community. So there will be more info on that once it's finalized. We also had an Alameda County Mayor's Conference hosted in Fremont at the Tesla factory. Before you ask, my goodie bag did include a Tesla. It was a nice little Hot Wheels Tesla. We had some bill updates there. We had a presentation about Fremont's workforce housing program, which is very impressive. And our neighbor, the mayor of Berkeley, was elected the president of that body. One wonders how he does it. We also had the first meeting of the ABAG Housing Committee that I, since I've been appointed. We discussed the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority's Equity Plan, which is their framework of how they are going to spend their portion of the proposed bond that is going to be on the ballot this election cycle, which is very detailed, and we'll come to the full ABAG Executive Board soon, so we'll have more there. And we talked about the general obligation bonds as well, so there will be more updates on all of that later. Now, we come to Vice Mayor.
No updates other than attending the groundbreaking.
Any questions or follow-up from council on any of that? Any questions or comments from the public? Great, then that brings us to future agenda items. Are there any council members who have an item for a future agenda they would like to note? Seeing none? Are there any public comment on this item? That brings us to city meeting events. I ask everyone to look at our schedule and note that Memorial Day, the city offices will be closed. And finally, that brings us to our adjournment. Thank you to staff, to everyone who stuck with us, to Jeremy in the back, and to all the council members and Vice Mayor. We are adjourned.